To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning Noel. I would call the meeting to order.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda if there's no additions.
Well, we have Chris was headed down to L E C.
Oh, we lost him.
He doesn't know what kind of issue they have down there. They're doing something. Something's going on their computer. So he said, if I can get back. I'll be here. If I'm not, we might have to kick his work session. Towards next week or the following.
I had him at my office Friday for half day. Goldfield switched their email stuff around and it screwed up. Screwed up all of our computers where we couldn't send or receive email.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the warning.
So with that, we'll just leave that as a work session possible either today or next week or in the next couple. So. You still make the motion?
Yeah. Well, with that, if he's here, he's here. If not, it'll be later.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the agenda. Any other discussion? Nothing else to go on? Okay, all in favor? Pose same sign, motion carried. Minutes for the thirty first.
I read through them. They were fine on the motion.
Motion in the second and the third. All in favor, I. Pose same sign, motion carried. General public concerns. Nobody on Zoom? Ben?
Morning.
Morning.
Just got the one main item on the agenda to purchase a pickup truck for the Hardy shop. We took quotes from the two local suppliers, Humble Motors and Northland. And I believe I gave you guys copies of those. The little bid was from Humble Motor Sales. Crew cab with a long box for forty six thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Those from Northland Auto were fifty six thousand oh four six and sixty six thousand three point seven. This is similar to the Foreman truck in Humboldt as well as both. So if you've seen those silver four door pickups.
And I guess I would also throw in there. The one that you're replacing. Couldn't well use.
Yes. We're gonna keep it around. They're gonna use it as a backup. Hardy's the only shop that doesn't have two pickups. So if one person is running to Ford Dodge for parts and the other guy needs to do anything. Whether it's run out and replace a sign, they've gotta try and throw the sign in. A dump truck can drive out.
This is going to the Hardy shop?
This would go to the Hardy shop, yeah. So after this, every shop would have two available pickups.
Can I get whatever color they sent you?
Yeah, we're gonna try and shoot for silver somewhere to everything else.
Don't want to buy. Wouldn't say, I'm missing something, the timeframe.
Talking to Humble Motors, they thought availability wouldn't be a problem. I missed the most recent order that they had a week and a half ago, but I should be able to get on their next one. Which should be as of late next week for their order.
This was also in your budget, right? So we aren't commending nothing to you. It's been planning on doing this, so we're good.
This is the order, is this a twenty three model then?
Yes.
All right, now you can.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve Humboldt Motors for the pickup for the Hardy shop.
Second that.
We have a motion in the second for approval of pickup for the Hardy shop. Any other discussion? All in favor, I. Pose same sign, motion carried.
Talked into Eric last week, we talked about. The age of our two dump trucks and when we were looking at upgrading. Those two dump trucks are two thousand sevens. They are starting to get up there in miles. I gave you guys copies of the most recent discussion where other counties are expressing frustration with the continued. Unavailability and surcharges with equipment. Trucks are worse than graders right now as far as the surcharges. Every time there's an upcharge in either the chassis or the raw materials. They're basically rolling it right over to the customer and then if you decide that you want out, they don't care.
Yeah, because you got somebody else.
Because they got somebody else waiting for this thing, so.
Are you putting, they putting money down then when you ordered it?
They're, they're not and they're, they're not honoring the signed contract price.
These some emails you went back and forth with some other folks?
No, so this was, uh, this was a question that was reached out to on the Iowa County Engineers branch. Where counties are ordering, say, a twenty twenty two model. And when the year gets going far enough, they realize they're not gonna be able to build twenty twos. So they cancel the order and tell them that they can order twenty threes, but it's gonna cost another twenty five thousand dollars a truck. And. If you want in, you can opt in. So I guess what I'm saying is. Next budget session, I'll be scheduling dump trucks, but don't be shocked if we run into the same situation. That all the other counties in Iowa are running into right now.
Question. Yeah, we brought this up a million times. Do we have things for our employees to do if we hired somebody to stockpile our rock?
Do we have?
Things for our employees to do in the middle of the winter to, in case we hired somebody to stockpile our rock instead of wearing our trucks out hauling rock, stockpiling.
We always do, but.
Just as I, you know, we always talk about it.
Last time I ran the pencil to it, it didn't pan out.
I was just saying we don't trade trucks up quite as often if we don't put as many miles on.
Right.
Hire someone that done, sometimes it's cheaper, I don't know.
Uh, speaking of rock, we're probably gonna start stockpiling rock here this week. We received notification from Martin Marietta that they're planning on going up on price again. So our one inch roadstone that was costing eight eighty, they're going up to nine ninety.
Oh geez.
Effective the first of the year.
They just, they just jumped at this point.
As of right now, Seaver's Griffith is still at seven and a quarter, so we're gonna haul a bunch of material from Seaver's. And try and lock in as much rock as we can at that seven and a quarter.
Well, start off, because it's. Ben and I were just having a casual conversation about all this. And he was doing really rough figuring, but if you start figuring a dollar, a ton increase, it's a lot. It ends up starting to become real money. It's all.
Then they won't let you just go in there and buy three hundred thousand tons or like we're gonna have.
You can try and lock in a, a stockpile. Some counties have had success at doing that. I know Carroll County. Just locked in ten thousand ton with Seaver's Griffith. And that's something that we can look at.
I, I didn't know if that's a thought, you know.
Yeah, they, for instance, sounds to me like they worry wise, they more prefer you to haul it out of the quarry.
Pay for it as you haul it.
Yeah, I mean, the last time we built a stockpile or we bought a stockpile, it wasn't cheaper.
I guess they can get it locked in price wise.
Yep.
And then, you know.
I can talk to Chad, our, our salesman.
Say, I wanna buy this much, we'll have it hauled within thirty days or whatever, you know.
Well, that might be.
Or twenty days.
This might be hauled within three months too, you never know.
We do have two new foremen that will be taking over the reins in the Humboldt and Hardy Shop location. At the end of this month with the retirement of Benny Lippel and Mike Carpenter. For the Hardy Shop location will be Ken Rossing.
Ken, what was that again?
Ken Rossing.
They spell that.
Uh, K E N.
Have a brother Ken, I know how to spell that. Is it R O S?
R O S S.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And then the Humboldt Shop location will be Derek Warley. Uh, D A R R I C K W O E R L E. They will be taking over the foreman position at the end of this month.
Are these current employees?
Yes.
And then, so you have to advertise.
Will be posting.
To swap shops.
New openings. Well, I, I posted for swap shops. I did have one employee from Boat switch over to Hardy. So I will have openings in the Boat and Humboldt area. My goal is I'm gonna advertise for openings and. Interview one time for both shop locations.
So how long have Ken and Derek worked?
Uh, Ken's been with the county almost twenty years. He started in Bradgate. Before that shop was leveled by.
I was gonna say, he outlasted the shop.
And then Derek's been with us a little over two years now. So, uh, he's still relative.
Okay, I have a question on back to the trucks.
Yes.
What if we ordered trucks from two different places? Are you obligated to? One came in one place and I know we don't wanna switch, we don't like switching.
Not opposed to switching brands of trucks as.
As long as everything fits.
As long as the snow equipment is similar, I'm fine with that.
I guess I just wondered, you know, if you, what is it? You get it over here. You've been getting them from over.
Been getting them from Don's. Their, their question from the guys is always Mac. Which Mac makes an exceptional truck. And they are a local supplier. We can look at that. We're, we're talking more expensive truck, obviously. That we can discuss at a budget time and if that's something that.
Somebody's really bothering you.
Uh, it's my dad's security camera.
They gotta have it. Somebody coming in there with a hammer.
Yeah. Well, yeah, uh, we can definitely look at it then. I. I know the surrounding counties around us, they've been buying Mac lately. I can get prices from them and see what they've been purchasing them for lately.
I guess I'm just looking at the availability. Every, every month. Our old trucks are getting older and less valuable.
There's nothing available right now.
You're, you're probably gonna get it, but it's just gonna cost you a lot more money than what you think it's gonna cost. If you sign a contract, it's gonna cost you more than your contract.
Right, they don't honor the contract.
Someone calls like you, he's actually with his truck, it was almost a year out and he's still waiting.
I think they're saying fifteen months. Cause I mean, once we have our, our budget work session, I'm probably gonna be reaching out for quotes to try and get them ordered. Knowing that it's over a year delivery. As far as which trucks, it, it doesn't matter. Uh, Mac, Western Star, International, everybody's experiencing the same. In manufacturing.
All right, well, see what you come up with. I guess as far as the new foreman, they'll take over, or did you say after?
Just at, just after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Both, uh, both of my current foremen will be done working the end of November. And they've got like three weeks vacation that'll pay them to Christmas, so.
So they got their fingers crossed for no snow.
Yes. There's a reason they always retire a lot now.
Well, I guess wish the other two retiring gentlemen. We see them, we do the same, but thank them for all they've done.
Yeah, it's thirty seven years and like twenty five years. Danny's been here thirty seven, wow, and I think thirty seven. Uh, it's coming around my mouth, doesn't sound very pretty.
Yeah, very well could be, because I.
Cause he's.
He was fairly young when he got in there.
Six now.
Well. We appreciate both of them. Well, appreciate all of them, I guess. Appreciate it more when the snow starts falling, if it does. All right, anything else? All right, thank you much.
Thank you.
Now, looks like we're discussion time. Somebody came back from grandma duties.
It was wonderful, yes.
Congratulations.
Work is a little bit easier, I think.
Good for you.
We were just wondering what your thoughts were on the wellness. We figured something needed to be decided one way or the other.
So did, was there any corporate thing? I know that, that was the big discussion last time, something about a corporate rate or something like that, or?
Paxton still hasn't, their board hasn't decided about their price increase. She thought it might go up three or five percent more next year for memberships. I guess I would recommend. If you guys wanna continue, stay with the twenty dollars per employee, per month. And let the employee pay for the additional fee if it goes up. But no, that did not.
Well, how many do we have participating?
There's twenty six.
Twenty six employees participate.
The thing, I double check the fund that we've been putting the dues in. And we wouldn't need any county money to this year. Out of that E B S fund, there's sixteen thousand. From the dues being reimbursed over the last few years. And the. Total dues run about thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, depending on how many.
So membership fees went up.
They're anticipating that, you know, she's, yeah, they haven't made that decision yet, but she's expecting three to five percent higher.
Now, now the dues are coming out of our self funding account.
It did originally, but we wouldn't need money this year, because as we've been reimbursed from the employees over the last several years.
So by paying upfront, we get a five percent discount. And I asked Paxton, we can pay semi annually or quarterly, so that if you have employees that are leaving. We haven't prepaid for some, we tried to get money back. Which is impossible. She's fine with that.
Well, my feelings are with twenty six people that are participating, or twenty five, because I know one that's been kinda lax.
Two.
There's been more than that, so yeah. Some way to follow up to make sure people are even going, because this is money, this is county money that's going out and nobody's using it.
And they're not using.
Healthcare money.
Well, it's not healthcare money, it's coming out of their self funding, which comes out of people's paychecks.
Right, right.
So it is the employees' money.
And our insurance went up because we had to cover, because we went in the hole one time.
Yeah, it's a tough decision.
Well, I guess whatever twenty some people that are, are participating in it, if they are participating.
I should, when you say parts, participating is.
They're paying.
They're paying in.
They're still using their money to. To use something to, to exercise that we hope is what they're doing. They're going up there to socialize, maybe.
Maybe.
Do that while you walk.
Yeah, yeah. But the point of it is to, to help money. But it also, if those few people, then they, they reduce their risk. They've proven that exercise reduces risk. It could also help with our insurance too. We don't have any huge claims and things like that. We gotta look at it that way too.
If people are actually going.
Yeah, that's the problem, people aren't going. Is to help out with people who do need it. If we don't have it, then.
The other option would be close this account with the sixteen thousand self funding.
Put it back in the self funding.
How far will that go?
Right.
So we have twenty six, I wanna get this straight in my mind. We have twenty six people who have opted to have this taken out of their paychecks.
Correct.
And then the, does the county match any of that?
Just that.
Per person towards a single or towards a family membership.
Okay.
That originally came from the E B S.
That comes from the self funding, that's twenty bucks.
And that's per month?
Yeah, okay.
What's the total?
Last year we paid.
Membership cost? Right now.
For the twenty six members, it was thirteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars.
For a single membership.
Yeah, what's the single membership cost right now?
Two eighty five.
I have four hundred fifty.
Yeah.
Per year, per person. So I mean, if it was twenty dollars a month, was it, was it half, was it forty dollars a month?
So we pay around two hundred and sixteen out of each.
Yes, and the employee paid two forty.
Okay, so almost half.
So when I hear Wright County has such a huge deduction for their wellness program, why the hell can't we?
There's goes through.
They're, they have ISAC insurance, which is maybe better.
And if you looked at that printout, when I asked other counties what they did, it was pretty obvious which ones have ISAC insurance, because they.
Yeah, they do.
I was talking with one. There, it kinda fizzled on them too, with ISA. They start out good one year and then the next year went down to virtually nothing. So, it's kinda depends on how, yeah, how many people attend the wellness things that they have on. Just because you promote them, doesn't mean you get, you, you gotta have the people participate in order to get the deduction. And they said the first year is pretty good and then it kinda fizzled.
Well, it's just keeping up on it and keeping it after. I mean, part of it is, you know, how much we as a county wanna put into it too.
Yeah.
You know, who wants to show up? That's, that's part of it too. We probably need to be more proactive with it too.
Well, we're in a dilemma, because it sounds like we have two that are definitely against it and we got two that are for.
Yep.
Well, it is an accounting hassle for payroll too.
Well, I mean, but it's also a benefit towards our employees. I mean, that's one of the things that you gotta look at is the benefit towards the employees.
Advantage of it.
Right, but still, it doesn't ma, I mean, they're still matching some of it.
But we're paying out money on the county's behalf.
Um, for people that aren't utilizing it. It's wasteful on that. If they're not using it, they need to just not.
Not do it.
Yeah, and therefore it would take. Somebody looking at. The statistics on how often people use.
They're more than happy to give us data and we can ask for it, you could make.
And you were doing that at one time where people.
Started, but who has time? Hey, you're one time short.
Yeah.
Get in there and make a lot.
And who knows, maybe I have an injury and I'll do more the next month that I'm under.
Sometimes life just happens. I mean, if they go. Participate, you know, even once in a while, it's gotta be beneficial and maybe something's come up or whatever like that. I mean, you're gonna penalize somebody for one time short? One time short.
Yeah.
Or all summer.
That's what we've got a problem with.
Well, or all summer, I mean, summer is gonna be hard for anybody. I mean, I bet the attendance goes down in the summer for all, for all.
Just winter time.
Or how about we just give. If you go to the wellness center, you pay for it, it doesn't come out through payroll. But we can reimburse you as an incentive, twenty dollars a month.
So we're talking about a hassle in payroll and now you're wanting to do something.
Reimburse it.
Well, that.
You have no idea what payroll is.
I don't have any idea.
Taking us out. We have to balance with E B S's stuff and it's.
I can see, that would be a lot easier. That would be a lot easier.
That's just writing a claim out or.
Rather than doing it every two weeks, you gotta do it every month or whatever it is.
Right.
Reimburse them monthly or quarterly.
That way the ones who actually are using it are getting the benefit, rather than we're paying for the benefit and people aren't using it.
Yeah, because they could bring in their sheet, because all you have to scan a card. So it would show that they were going and then, yeah, just reimburse.
Actually, I'd almost be in more favor of that, even paying for more of it if they are going.
I would too.
Because that would incentivize them more to go.
Certainly keep it at half price while you talk this pay increase, make sure at least the half price matches the.
Yeah.
Cost increase for the people that actually go like.
Uh, that's a, to me, that's a much better idea, because then you're paying for what you're getting rather than paying for something you hope you're getting.
Truly easier to do it that way. That sounds like a pretty good solution, like they can give them a little more, fully half price for people that actually are using it.
Yeah.
To show the paperwork and then, yeah.
And then they do give. Yeah, because otherwise, they're taking advantage of a half price offer that they aren't using.
Right, and that puts the responsibility back on to the person that's actually attending to get in the sheet.
Yeah.
Restrict how many times they can request their reimbursement, like it has to only be monthly, quarterly.
Yeah, one, something, whatever you think.
Direction that way, because otherwise, you know, people turn them in every week.
Yeah, because.
Let them turn them in every week. If they turn them in every week, let them turn them in. That's what you're asking for.
Yeah, I know, but that turns into a lot of paperwork.
You know what? Would, you can't have it both ways.
Exactly.
All right.
Do what you gotta do.
Or claims are only every other week, so they would only get paid every other time anyway, even if they turned it in every week.
So then what, what's your requirement per month or whatever to?
Just how much, every time they go, how much every time they go?
If they, if they pay for an, you know, if you go in and pay for your whole year upfront, you bring it in, here I paid for my whole year. We'll pay you back half. That'd be the simple way. And then we don't have to keep track of how many times they go. Let the people pay for it themselves. And if they want to, it solves all that paperwork dilemma.
And then you're not making them go.
No, but that's their choice.
But you're still paying. That doesn't make sense either, because if you're wanting to prove that they're going and that they're, they're, you know. Because the people who are doing it right now, it's still, um, they're still paying their share of it out of the payroll anyway. So either way, whether you're reimbursing them twenty dollars a month or whether you.
Difference is. People that aren't going, aren't gonna go out and pay for their membership because they're not going, so you're not paying that extra half. Cause you. That's what I'm thinking.
Basically.
It'll cost us less and less paperwork.
Well, somebody makes some directions, so they're wanting to decide here.
Well, I'd make a motion that we switch from our current policy to paying up to fifty percent of a membership. What's that?
Of a single membership.
Single, single membership for Humboldt County employees.
So is our current, there, let me ask.
Starting.
Is our current through the end of the year?
Yeah.
So this would be the start of next year.
So it's the first of January, it's the new program.
We need to let the employees know.
As I got right now, we're what, paying two sixteen and the other membership was two or four sixty or something.
We're taking that entire discount by paying upfront.
We're losing that early pay discount. Does a single membership is how much now?
Four fifty six now.
And it may go up.
Might be better off just giving them a dollar, not a percentage. Or go back to the, so much every time you attend.
Up to, I think it's gonna be paperwork, but it's gonna, um, so what about the ones like for that are sixty-five or something like that, is there, wasn't there something with?
Yeah, there's a, there was a limit on the senior couples of a hundred and seventy-one, so they, they didn't have paid their full.
Are you still doing that then?
I think they should still have to pay fifty percent or whatever we make everybody else pay, however what it is.
You say it's a lot, you know, it's from two twenty-five or two twenty-eight to two sixteen or.
So we have a motion.
I'm gonna stick with my fifty percent. Or their membership or their participation if it's per time even, some people don't buy a membership, they just pay for each time, there you go.
And then it's even more.
I know, but still, it's to get them there, it's the point.
So we have a second for Rick's motion?
You're trying to, I get, I know we can't really have discussions, I think I got it, but.
We're trying to.
We can second it and still get the discussion.
Second it's showing.
Alright, now we can discuss it, we have a second.
So my question is, so they could bring in, cause I'm trying to, I can understand and sympathize for all of the headache on the payroll part of it that Trish has mentioned and the headache of keeping track of it. So, whether they come in weekly, monthly, semi-annually, yearly, cause I got a question for you gals, since you've been working with this, what if just average person goes up, there's nothing to do with this, do they get a discount for purchasing a yearly membership?
The five percent.
Everybody does, so if you go in there, then they do it by the calendar year?
Yes.
So you go in there the first of the year and say, I want a membership, you're just the average person, they give you five percent. And you pay your five percent.
You pay it upfront.
Yeah, if you go in there and say whatever the yearly membership is this year, here's my money, they get five percent, so.
And I don't know what the monthly is if you don't do it that way.
Well, but is your motion to the effect that whether you, and it's been, I'm trying to tie this all together, daily, weekly, monthly, yearly, whenever you submit a bill into payroll, so just, you know, to get a reimbursement, you're gonna get back half of that, right? So like I said, if I go in there and I say, first of the year, here's my single membership, here's, I'm paying for it.
Yeah, and I paid for it. My receipt I paid for.
And I can bring it in and I can say, I paid for your membership, here's what it is, and I get half of it reimbursed.
That avoids the, if somebody's terminated or quits and we don't have to follow up and try to get reimbursement from their portion of.
You just basically, the simplicity is you reimburse them, half or whatever.
Twice. Three times.
What's happened three times?
And how long, in what timeframe? One.
Four, five years.
That we've been doing it, okay.
And when I talked to Paxton about that, she was, we're just doing like the city, the new one just takes their place, I said, no, city's paying a hundred percent for all their employees to join, so obviously they, all are members and when someone leaves, the next one takes their place and you don't have this.
Yeah.
I choose or I don't choose to part.
So, it's just whatever they bring in for a invoice, reimbursed, it could be a yearly, I mean, people that go there, I can't imagine to take advantage of any of this, probably not a daily thing, I wouldn't think, but if they did, if they came in and says it costs twenty dollars a day to go to the rec center, they could get ten dollars reimbursement, or they did it monthly, I don't know however they set that up, and I don't know how people do this, but. I mean, that, is that kinda where you're driving at, is that way whatever they do?
I'm just trying to keep people incentivized to do it and keep the paperwork simple, that's, that's the two goals I'm after.
And they do still get an incentive, because if they're a county employee, can they bring in an invoice for, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify.
Whether it's a month or a one-time deal.
For a year, they get half of that reimbursed, done deal.
Without any stipulations of how much to attend, cause I'm gonna go pay my full year membership and I'm gonna turn that in, how are you gonna know that I'm gonna go in?
I guess you're not, but I think also.
So what's the difference in doing it now? I mean, that's no different than what we're doing now.
It solves the paperwork issue. And then it's, we still have, we can't force our employees to go.
Right.
So either that or we just dissolve the entirety and then we don't worry about it.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that. I'm just trying to solve paperwork issues.
Was another part of your thought process just picking your brain, that you're making the person go purchase the membership? They physically have to go pay for their membership.
Out of their pocket to get the reimbursement, so the people who probably aren't, you know, like it's pretty easy to say, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna go, I'll check the point.
Because is it set up in, in regards to that, is it set up right now that they had, the, the employee participating in the wellness thing at the rec center, they aren't going up and writing them a check, it's coming out of their paycheck?
Right.
Which is the, probably the headache of the payroll, so they're getting a rea- they're kind of getting a reimbursement, but part of that payment is coming out of their paycheck, they never see it, they never roll the check.
No, they never see it.
I, I.
Not that it's that much, but it's, the other benefit of it is, it's, it's pre-tax money, I'm assuming. You don't know, okay.
I would, I would guess it would be.
That would be my guess too, cause most deductions like are pre-tax, so they're gonna be losing a little bit of tax benefit also, I don't know how many really, but still, I mean, it's I don't know, I think that it's, it just makes it easier for the employee to have it be, just come out of their payroll, that's just my opinion.
There again, you got payroll hassles with the EBS companies.
Sounds like.
That's part of.
A lot of this is.
I mean, that's part of it, I mean.
Paperwork.
People, I've done payroll, that's just part of it.
We're just trying to help and simplify it for our payroll.
Are you, in your motion only, I'm opening it up to people that have the health insurance, that's the way it's been in the past, are you opening it to any employee?
Hmm.
I, 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 I suppose there is a few, isn't there?
I have no clue.
I remember when we first started, there was one that wanted it and didn't qualify, I can't remember who that was, but they.
Well, I think, I think it should be for all employees.
I don't care.
I guess, I guess the idea is to cut down on insurance costs, or maybe it has to be limited to the people who are on rec charts.
Well, it wouldn't be going through EBS anymore, so we wouldn't have it affecting our premium when we have to pay back, you know, the personal self-funds, so if they. I thought that was part of the issue you had with payroll was because you had to match up money for EBS. You just, you said that earlier, you gotta met, you gotta match up your money with EBS and that, now you just said it wouldn't be going through EBS.
It won't be.
It will not be going through EBS. So how, so it's gonna be fully, so it's gonna be fully on the, on the county then to pay it, then if it's not, we're not gonna use any self-funding money, then if you put it through the reimbursement, then it is fully county money. But it wouldn't be going through payroll and. Right.
I, I see, I see, I see what you're saying.
But we can use the sixteen thousand we have and wait and see with that.
I see what you're saying.
It goes through the wellness fund, not EBS.
So the wellness fund would pay for it, cause we have.
Wellness, yeah, we, we budget for the wellness, we have.
Okay.
So it's still, but you guys were saying it wasn't, you didn't want it to be county money, so it really is county money.
Well, it was county money the first time, because we paid the premium upfront, or not the premium, the, the registration upfront. So that come out of county money, and then the payroll paid the other half.
On the assumption that it was going to help our wellness program, which helped our insurance program, which helped all of us, that was the assumption, but evidently that isn't working, so.
I think it is working, some, some are participating.
Well, and you said that there's sixteen thousand dollars in your wellness fund?
Yeah.
Couldn't, again, I know what you're trying to do is make this simpler for.
I was trying to, but it seems like.
It's, it's hard, if I'd ever thought the wellness program would be that complicated.
Thousand is there because fourteen thousand or whatever was budgeted back in when we first started, in July. There's like twelve to fourteen thousand that we budget every year to the wellness program.
So I have a question.
So, so that money's already coming from the county.
The simplicity that we're riding for, if somebody just came in with an invoice to get reimbursed, is it easy to take it out of the twelve to sixteen thousand that's already there?
Yeah, it'd come as a claim.
That's where it'd come, it would come out of that line item.
And not run through the EBS portion, what?
And not run through payroll. Simplify it a bunch.
That, that's what I'm trying to.
Means this is discussion, here's just a thought, means if that's the case, it's, there's already money there to pay any reimbursement, that you're driving for reimbursement.
For the people who use it.
That, well, that bring in something to get reimbursed, so we could certainly put this on trial for a calendar year, cause it would start in January and end in December of twenty twenty-three, and there would be enough money there to do it, right, and see how that works, and then have this discussion a year from now, true. Give it a, give it a, a, a trial, uh, you know, an experiment.
So then the EBS, then through the self-funding, will that reimburse that wellness fund then, is that how that's gonna work then every year?
No, EBS is not giving them, the money is coming out of the payroll, I mean, it's coming from the employees, that money's coming out of the employees in EBS, EBS is holding it.
Right, I guess my big thing was Trish kept saying that they had a balance with EBS, and so that really isn't an issue then, if it's not coming out of EBS funding, that it's not an issue.
I mean.
Cause you said that was one of the issues.
I'm saying going forward, this money won't go to EBS.
I think it's, I think it's, that motion's correct, no, I forgot.
Because Jen asked a check from EBS, right?
I have for the last few years, first year it was like the fifteen thousand, we dropped it to twelve.
So that's where.
And then last year, I think we only got five from EBS. And then.
And Rick knows how confusing EBS.
Well, we all, we all know, when you get, when you get all these mailings from EBS and, yeah, it's, it's frustrating, because they're so far behind always. I, I'm just trying to make it simple.
Won't you go six months at a time, because if I was doing it, six months of the year, I'd be out walking the street.
I know, but the rec center won't let you do that.
They don't get the five percent discount.
You can't, you can't go up there and.
Cause everybody would do that.
Yeah.
I say, unless I'm missing something, for all this discussion, there's been plenty of it, there's money there to simplify the administration of it, because it'd be a reimbursement, there's money there to do with that, it gets the headache away from the payroll.
The benefit is still to the employee.
We can make a caveat that we, it's a calendar year of twenty twenty-three coming up. It'll all work for that and then can discuss it again, cause I'm pretty sure we discussed it a year ago, so. But that's my take on it, I think it would be well worth a year's trial.
Sticking with my motion.
Yeah, I think we're good discussion.
I'll stick with someone saying, call the question. I'll offer the question.
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay.
We have the motion on the floor to pay fifty percent?
Of receipts turned.
Of the receipts turned in from the person that is participating, they paid the their fee, then bring it up here for reimbursement of up to fifty percent.
Of employees who use our county insurance, is that correct? I said, I didn't realize that some of our employees didn't use our county insurance.
First, we're needing another tablet up here.
But I did say all employees.
Okay.
Are you gonna look? You have to have, during through the county or is it all employees?
I think it should be all employees.
It should be all employees.
If we're gonna do it, let's just, and if it doesn't really go through EBS, then it really doesn't matter whether it's.
It's a county benefit.
Because that's the whole thing.
It's a county benefit.
So I'm sticking with my motion.
We'll need some tape recording to say for this, so. All in favor, I.
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 Oppose? Motion carried.
I might have to wake up our audience. I'm mad at our Zoom people. Probably fell asleep on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll give it a year, see if it's simpler, nicer.
Well, Jen will, Jen will, we'll miss you.
Yes.
Diane, you'll be back.
We'll see her at the gym.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a discussion about.
That's all she'll have to do.
Airplane case.
Oh.
That's all you'll have to do is walk and.
You'll be back.
Well, good for you. Alright.
Thank you very much.
All your headache with all of this stuff.
I know, it's. Not easy.
Give it over.
Well, try to do something good and it's still a headache.
I know.
Alright, I guess that led us down to the bottom of, uh, committee report.
Oh, on the thirty-first, I had to take care of signing nomination papers for IWDs, what IWD? Let's see. That's it.
Mister Dave, I think she's done.
She's done. I'm, I, yeah, that was it, yeah.
I'm sleeping.
Did you want more discussion or you go back to?
Yeah. Yeah, take another name. Okay, on Monday I had a meeting down at VA, proved the claims. Tuesday, the first, board of adjustment meeting went into closed session on it. Uh, Thursday I went and looked at a tile washout up in Grove Township. And also I drove over to Washington to see how the Beaver Dam's doing over by two hundred and fortieth.
Is it growing or are they taking it down?
They're back.
They're back.
We were trapped in last fall, we were, that's a very good water.
Water to make.
I know, that's.
But yeah, the beavers are back, so we gotta deal and to trap them again. Uh, that's all I had last week, official.
And just a reminder, uh, Veterans Day is this Friday?
Yes, it is Friday.
It is Friday.
We'd like to extend our uh, Happy Veterans Day and thank them.
Appreciate it.
Everybody for all they do.
There will be a program out front, if anybody is interested at eleven o'clock, if you're banging, we do a salute to the veterans.
So even if the weather's bad, cold, raining, you do it out in front?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Eleven?
Eleven o'clock. Eleventh month.
I just saw someone that posted it this morning.
So they saw.
Our World War.
Someone contributing money for. To the veterans associations for.
Before that burned down too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Eric?
I have to go back to Monday, the twenty-fourth, that afternoon, we had a building families meeting. Nothing, no official extracurricular meetings, uh, that passed week either, so. That was it for extra stuff.
Thursday, I went down to TP Anderson and signed checks for IDA again, every two weeks. And then I had a conversation with Dave Minikus on our landfill of northwest of town, northeast of town. We applied for this environmental covenant back in early September. We hadn't heard nothing, I hadn't heard nothing, so Dave, and he says, have you heard anything? I said, no, I haven't heard anything, so he calls up the guy, oh, yeah. It's just been sitting on his desk for six weeks, I haven't even looked at it, because come for this time of year, we're supposed to be doing a groundwater test, which is kind of like Dave says, kind of waste of time, cause he says probably a third of the wells are bone dry.
Yeah.
The other ones have so little water. The other ones have so little water in them, you don't get an accurate test. So he doesn't even wanna, he told him, I don't even wanna do the tests, he says, because. For those reasons, and if we get this environmental covenant done, eliminates all that. So hopefully they're gonna go through all that paperwork, and there was a stack of stuff that thick that we sent them, I can see why he looked at it, thought, I don't wanna read that. But, uh, hopefully they'll get through it and we'll hear something from them on, on that.
Does that get sent to the DNR?
Yes.
We'll have to look at it at some point, you're supposed to. You're asking to forget the test.
Well, yeah, I, we, yeah, we told them we're not gonna do it, cause there's nothing to test, cause it's so darn dry. Right, he went up to Kusu County and it was so, most, half their wells are dry, and we're way drier down here than they are. So he said it'd be a total waste of my time to come out and test. So we're said, we're not gonna test until spring. And hopefully by then we'll have this environmental covenant and we can. That's where we sit on that.
Okay.
Still, it's still in the works.
Just haven't had a reply.
Yeah.
Oh, for the week, for me, I had none, no official meeting, I would, uh, bring up. But we have the mobile food pantry this week, um, Wednesday from. What comes in on, uh, Wednesday after lunch, and they will take the stuff up to the humble homes. People in Livermore usually come, Livermore boat people come down and get theirs, and then ours is from four thirty to six, four thirty to whenever they.
Run out.
Run out, or, uh, I would say there's been a lot more activity, um, lately, so. Come early, I don't wanna say that, because they come right after the lunch, but, uh, it's.
Both to be four o'clock.
Four thirty. Handing out. Till whenever they get run out.
Not a minute before.
I guess the other thing I was gonna bring up, or have Trish go over, I know they were voting this weekend. Uh, appreciate them being open, uh, what are the, what are our times for the voting? They can do it today yet? And if you have an absentee, it has to be in your hands or in our possession by.
Eight o'clock tomorrow.
Eight o'clock.
By eight. And they can drop it off here at the office.
So question, they can't drive down here and dump it in here, or are you going down there at eight o'clock and check for anything? It has to be up here, I'm just asking.
It should be up here, yes. I mean, we cannot recommend the box. But we do check it in the event.
Right.
That somebody.
But it's just one of those things that it'd be a lot easier if you're bringing it up here that close to the deadline.
Bring it up.
Bring it upstairs, so that it's in our possession.
In the auditor's office.
And don't take them to the polls.
No.
Because they cannot accept them.
Oh, they can't take them.
Speaking of the polls, they open at. Seven AM till.
Eight PM.
Eight PM, I heard the radio, gave all of the locations today for.
This morning.
For where they vote, when they vote, be courteous to the people that are there doing the work. My neighbor asked me for my. And she said, Bruce, I know who you are, but can you show me the ID?
Not all the time are we able to use the scanners, they have programming problems with them more, so we weren't able to use them, and they just have to enter each one.
Okay.
But we, we are up to nine hundred and ninety issued right now.
Wow.
And that's quite fit.
So I would, so I would say that the people that have complained, make sure you come and vote, cause that's the only way we have a. Your voice is heard, exactly, so. With that, anything else? We are gonna have a work session, uh, here, and haven't seen Chris, but if we don't, we'll catch you next week. We will look for a motion to adjourn and.
I'll make that motion.
Say a motion in a second, to adjourn at nine twenty six, all in favor, aye? Post same sign, motion carried. Here is.
I cannot tell a lie, I shut it off while I said that, I didn't get it started right away.